They'll vary, and I think I support that. But at the same time, I want to make sure if a conflict arises afterwards. And there is a problem, something got by us somehow, or. Just the things we know that happens. That the interests of the neighborhood will be protected. I would probably ask. Do we have some general language? In an ordinance that declares the intent is primarily to protect residential use if there's any substantial conflict. That arises with a use permit. I did take the time to call our city attorney, Mr. Barker, since I knew he wouldn't be on the call today, and he indicated. From a legal perspective, that's perfectly valid and not at all unusual. So I would make that si- general suggestion. I think between the protections of a use permit. A nuisance protection, a nuisance ordinance. And having language that declares the intent is this is a residential area. And we're trying to make sure we. Focus on that perhaps with some primacy. I think we'd have good approach for next year for me to support much of this. And I would agree with Councilmember Harvey. I'd like to see. Larger notifications, the whole neighborhood, I think, rather than five hundred feet. I agree with her and Councilmember Ford. They had a number of things that's overlapped, I think. So I'm just going to list them all. Pesticides, synthetic fertilizers as well. I'd like to see language calling out restriction of that usage. I suspect most of our users wouldn't be using it. But I think since that's a direction we've tried to go, was it Council on the city, we should definitely call for that. I like the thing about looking to stormwater flies, noise, anything that helps with additional noise protection. Susan felt there were some good examples, and anything that can come back that helps with that, I would be supportive of. I'm open to more discussion about the hundred percent coverage. I think it might be okay with the setback. Again, maybe that setback's a couple of feet bigger, but I think we're close. And I think I would agree. If we have a limit on coverage, a half acre. And I'm not interested in expanding that. I think that it could be spread out in numerous locations and we could just tally the total area and that could work for an area. And in general, as I mentioned, I'm supportive of this, but I'm not supportive of expanding. I don't think I would be able to vote for an ordinance that expanded the hours. Or expand expanded. The maximum area. At least for the market garden. But other than that, I think I can totally get behind Market Garden. So let's see. I'm going to check back one more time. Councilmember Moore, did you have anything to say at this point? Are you good? Because I see a couple of new hands.
Well, I know we're not voting on any of this tonight. My understanding is just we're taking information and and then we're going to be bringing it back to the council.
Well, this is direction also to staff what you want to see and what you don't want to see in an ordinance. And I think they got a sense of that from the last meeting. But this is a time perhaps to share that too. That's why it's structured this way. So if you, I'll give you a second if you'd like to do that. And if we can, given the number of participants we have, I'd love to be able to do these in one pass rather than multiple passes for the council.
Okay, I will, I'll go ahead and let the other councilmembers speak and then I'll get back.
Perfect, perfect. All right, I'm going to go with Councilmember Ford and Councilmember Harvey. If we could keep it brief so we can get to our next thing and back to the public hopefully.
Thanks, Mayor Landman. Yes, I, I, I'm sorry, I did not realize number three was on this page. And so. Like you, I, as you were just outlining, I'm comfortable, more comfortable with that approach of trying to have a process to deal with issues. And and outlining the primary use of a residential zone is understood to be residential than. Wholesale banning uses because we have a, some fear that a particular bad apple might cause problems. And so if we can come up with a, with a way to. To have an effective nuisance abatement pro- process. That together with a use permit makes me comfortable with number three as well. I, I just wanted to address the hours issue a little bit. To say nine to five working hours. That's saying somebody can't work in their garden in the evenings. Which seems just silly to me, and I don't understand why we'd say that. So I, I think if we could phrase something that says mechanized equipment used limited to nine to five or something like that. And that would, that would take care of noise issues, but I'm not interested in policing whether my neighbors out there hoeing at seven in the evening on a summer. I would even be comfortable with with having those hours be somehow seasonal, you know, nine to sunset or something like that. But. But if we're, if what we're interested, what we're concerned about is dust and noise. Then let's make the hours. Specific to the things that cause most of the dust and noise which is mechanized equipment. And given that we're, that we're talking about, you know, equipment usually used residentially, then, then. Comfortable with that. Restriction being limited to, to the mechanized equipment.
Good, thank you. All right, Council Vice Mayor Harvey, excuse me, please go ahead.
Thank you. I, I thought we were first asking questions and that's why I didn't go through these. So. I am good with number one. I think that food. Home gardening is really important. We do it ourselves and we give away as much as we can that we can't eat and try and balance that out. I love the addition of the market garden. I think I agree with everyone. You know, we were looking at a problem with. You know, people, you know, kids trying to sell extra vegetables and how do we get around this? And I think that this. This is a good example to do that. I. I'd like to, I, I agree in concept with the gardening work hours. I know. You know, sometimes we're out early in the morning and sometimes we're out in, in, in the evening. And I like the suggestion of. The mechanical equipment and that does cause a lot because if someone's just out there, you know, with their hands and watering. That's really not causing a whole lot of problems. So maybe there's a better way to, to address that. I was, the setbacks, I know the mayor wanted them to be increased. On the other hand, I like the concept from Councilmember Ford that what if on the fence people were, you know, growing, you know, herbs on the fence. So. So I, I'm open, I'm open on that one. The produce stand, I agree with the two days a week. I could live with the. Nine to seven for those that work, I could, I could live with that. I want the structure to be out of sight. So I like your suggestion to remove those words. Public right of way. I think the parking spaces will work themselves out. And then I'm good with two A. And for item three, I think that with a use permit, we can handle all the concerns that I think were brought up. In the previous meeting. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to come back one more time to Councilmember Moore and see if you want to weigh in anything on page forty-four. Questions or comments or direction.
Uh, thank you. No, I would be in supportive of one on the crop production. Item two, I would be in supportive. I would agree with Councilmember Ford and. Councilmember Sparks regarding hours, they need to have a little bit more flexibility on there. I can see people working early in the morning, maybe not with the mechanized equipment, but then possibly later in the evening. And, and I would be okay to extend the hours on the produce stands to seven. And then you could potentially catch more people in that regard and limit that to two days a week. I don't think they should be in all zones, frankly. And. And then I have a question regarding the use permit. Forty-three hundred dollars for a use permit. Typically, when we're looking at use permits, they're, they're generally for a commercial establishment. Is there a way to, to carve that out in reference to something like this? Where that use permit could be significantly less expensive?
Uh, Councilmember Moore, I have seen examples, this is Noah House, the director, where different communities kind of create unique use permits for specific land uses. With the goal to, you know, kind of both. Somewhat subsidize the process for that land use, but then also acknowledge the benefits of a use permit review and the. Neighborhood involvement and engagement that goes with that. And one example is in Santa Rosa, they do what they call a residential fence use permit. Fences often cause issues. Sometimes it is appropriate to have a fence in a front setback. But the code historically used use permits as that mechanism, no one would spend thousands of dollars to ask a question to build a taller fence. So they intentionally created this residential fence use permit. We could, we could. Create a similar. Crop production use permit that could be intentionally reduced in cost.
Terrific. So, so those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Since we did a quick double dip, I'll just reply because I heard a couple of good ideas. So first of all, I love it when people say, no, I don't think I want to move for something. And then somebody comes up with a new idea and all of a sudden they have a little flexibility. These meetings are often long, but this is the reason for it. Sometimes in discussion, we come up with things. I could think I could. Potentially be moved by something in terms of hours of use during the day for Market Garden. If it describes certain hours where mechanized use. Or noise producing activities. Were prohibited. And that would allow people to do things that aren't. With mechanized equipment or making noise earlier or later. Because after all, how many of us are out doing some watering early in the morning on a hot day, very early, or later, once the sun's down? I mean. That seems reasonable. I think if you combine that, and I'm talking to staff here, if you combine that with, as we talked about, strong nuisance abatement. And that. General line of intent. In the ordinance that we just discussed that I cleared with Mr. Barker, indicating that if any conflict with a use permit in residence, that. The general intent here is to protect residential usage. I think I could live with that because I think it seems reasonable. And if we do wind up with a problem. I think that's enough to solve it. And I think it respects the. Use of the people that have lived here longer and been here first while giving opportunities to new ideas at the same time. Same thing with the day hours. I will admit, I don't really like the idea of going to nine to seven. The general idea was to try and. Reduce noise in people's neighborhoods around dinnertime. On the other hand, again, like I just said, if we have. Very clear calls out to how news abatement, nuisance abatement would work. And the line about making sure the intention, any conflict or problem or. Area of concern is protecting residential usage. I think I could go with it because again, if it did become problematic for a neighbor or two. I believe it would be solved through that in a way that was acceptable. So I, I hope that's clear enough direction for staff. I think general support for a lot of things on here, pretty close to what you've given us. A little extra flexibility and a few new ideas to fold in. And I'll check and see staff, if you're ready, can we move to our next, next phase?
Yes, yes, thank you. That, that was very helpful. Um, okay, let's see, where were we? That was a lot, right? We're going to have fewer, possibly fewer things to chew on. We'll see. Can I have the next slide, please, Kevin? Okay, so we got into this a little bit already, so hopefully this will be more streamlined. Okay, so once folks have grown their produce and there's a question of, are they going to sell it onsite? Is that, is that okay? So one option that we have is this idea that the folks are growing food in their own personal home gardens and they have excess. Would we want to allow them to operate a produce stand? And just as a starting point, you know, would those, would that produce stand? Have the same limitations of those that were described for the Market Garden. Right, which we had talked about, the one hundred square feet maximum size. Tucked away out of sight of everybody when it's not operating on those other days of the week, you know, limited to two days a week. Nine to seven, you know, is something we've talked about with all the appropriate. Sort of precautionary measures, the two parking spaces. So would, would the council be interested in extending that right over produce stand? To someone who is otherwise not a commercial farmer or a home gardener? Okay, and then moving on to, you know, option five, we're talking again about the produce stands at Market Gardens. And I just wanted to point out here, I mean, it sounds like we're fairly clear. You know, from that discussion, what would work for Katari? One of the options is that. Well, actually, you know, and I'm not even going to go into it because it's, it's probably not useful at this point. I was going to say that we could actually mix and match here, but I think we're fairly clear on the direction. Another idea is the produce stands in RBL, and this kind of goes with the crop production. Land use. So we have produce stands allowed in the RR zone, rural residential. We'd like to extend. That with a use permit to the RBL zone as well. And then our final two options, seven and eight, really, they relate to community supported agriculture, which is what CSA stands for. And for a lot of farms, that can be a pretty important income producer. It's the membership. To the farm where folks come, pick up their weekly farm box at the farm. Right now, as the crop production land use is written in our code, it allows retail sales in the field. And so if we were presented with someone coming in at this point in RR with a crop production land use and they wanted to operate. A CSA, based on that retail sales in the field, you know, we may be inclined to say, yeah, that, that sounds like that would cover community supported agriculture. The question really is. Is that really the intention of the code? Would, would we like to be more specific? In the language of the code and call out community supported agriculture. So that moving forward in posterity, that that's something that is allowed within the crop production land use. And if so, then that would be applied to the RR zone where crop production is already allowed. And could be applied in RBL if the council felt like extending crop production. To the RBL zone with the use permit. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so just a couple of pictures. So this produce stand is in East Sacramento. And as you can see, it's on wheels and it's, it's small and cute. So they can wheel it out to the street and then wheel it away. For their, you know, they're, they're limited to two days a week there as, as an urban farm operation. Okay, next slide. Here's a totally different version, also portable, not as cute, not on wheels, but you know, a larger farm stand. That could be taken down, put away at the end of the day, stowed back in the garage or what have you. Okay, next slide. Okay, so here's our table. Of all of those various options that I just ran through pretty quickly. So at this point, we can move on to any further discussion we need to have that covers the idea of selling the produce onsite. And I can answer any questions. And Mayor Landman, you can take it away with discussion.
Perfect. So I think we're going to follow the same process we did last time. So I'm going to open it up to public comment. I'll ask right now, everybody who wants to comment specifically on the issues on page forty-nine. Produce stands and CSA. Items four through eight. Please go ahead and raise your hand. I'd like to get an idea of how many people I have that want to speak. And I'm going to wait just a second, let a few hands pop up because I know it takes a minute to do this. All right, I'm not seeing a terrible amount of, lot amount of hands. So I think we can go with a full three minutes. I will suggest that if. All of a sudden, we all decide to speak, I might need to lower it back down to two because we have a lot more to go through. But with that, let's go ahead and open public comment specifically for strategies and standards for produce stands and CSA.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Lisa Moore, please go ahead.
So I just, I, I had a couple of questions and I apologize if it's not exactly on, on point here. But. One of the questions I had was on what Councilmember Ford said he didn't have an issue about. Growing food and selling it from your property. So I just had a question on this is, I go to a lot of farm stands throughout the county. And they grow food and they make jelly or like I do horseradish. They make other products. I just wanted to know if that would be allowed in a farm stand. Farm stands range from just produce to. To, to, to fruit and vegetables, but they also can have eggs. They can have all different products. So if you have chickens, can you sell your eggs there? Does it all have to be just basically raw fruits and vegetables? On the idea of having farm stands everywhere. I'm not a big fan of that. I think the. The model that you have for rural residential might work for other. Zones, but I, I don't feel like we should have farm stands for, as a permitted use. So those are my comments. Thank you.
And you were right on point because it was all about farm stands. Thank you.
Roy Smith, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Let me get back to my notes. Okay. Yes, so. What I would suggest for four is that we match the hours of the produce stands to that of the local grocery stores. What we're doing here is increasing. The amount of food that's available to residents. And that's what grocery stores do. The whole issue here is not to permit something that's nice to have, but rather to address. An increasing food crisis. It's global in nature. And that will not abate. We are looking at a easily a doubling of food costs over the next decade from where they are today. And this is not a, a discussion of, of permitting something that people want to do. This is a discussion about producing a system that will take care of residents. It is our, it is our requirement that we as citizens and leaders. Look out to the future and recognize what is coming down the road. So this is. What I would suggest is that we try to match the grocery stores in quantity and availability, but make it. Local as possible. The next item five eight. Absolutely, it needs to be by right. What we're talking about again is, is not promoting. This is just simply saying, what are people allowed to do? We need to go beyond just allowing things. We need to actively get gardens in place while we still have time to do this. It is not easy to grow food. It requires skills that we do not have anymore. We're in great danger and we're really. I'm glad we're having this conversation, but this is only a beginning of where we need to go. And then, let's see. Well, so as far as these other, these other allowances. I would just suggest right here that I think we need to be looking. At permitting. All the things that were suggested for the, the Filetti Ranch. Those, those use permits that I will probably get to later. I think those should all be in place for a market garden as well. Maximize food production. That's, that's what I'm looking to do. Thank you.
Jenny Blaker, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I, I think there should be this crop production possibility in, in the. What is it called? RBL, RBL as well as rural residential. I'm not quite clear what the existing standards are for the crop production. But so far I've been, I have to say, kind of dismayed by the amount of restrictions. That we're talking about. And it seems to me that we're actually restricting gardeners and people who grow food more than anyone else. I mean, when I think about noise, I think about people with weed whackers and chainsaws and, and all that, all kinds of noises that are going to be. You know, more than current farmers and. Hours, as people have said, you know, some of these people growing food are not doing it full time. So they're going to need to do it early in the morning and, and the evening and so on. Sorry, I'm getting off point. But anyway, I think we should make the crop production. Easier for people and definitely lower the four thousand, over four thousand dollar use permit. That seems absolutely exorbitant for anyone who's. Trying to get started in a small business or a small business on the side or. Just selling some excess produce for over four thousand dollars just seems way, way out of scale.
I hate to interrupt you. If I could ask you to hold on for a second, I will give you your time back. But I have to ask you because I've asked everybody else, I'm going to need you to stick. Your comments be related to items four through eight on page forty-nine because that's what we're doing here. And I recognize sometimes we wander a little bit, but I, I've been trying to hold everybody to that standard now. The first time around, I let us all just. Get our general thoughts out. But if you could do that, that would be helpful because I, I need to hold everybody to that. I hope you understand.
Can we comment on number six and seven and eight? Allow produce stands with UP and RBL district, yes, but at a, at a smaller cost to the grower. And yes, to CSAs. And that we should be encouraging these things, not restricting them. That's it. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Neil Hancock, go ahead.
Yes, hello, thank you. Again, it's, it's, it's challenging to work through all these complexities, but I appreciate we're breaking them down. And missing the bigger picture overall. So I do see that what Roy Smith is saying about food production and education is in there. Education, part of it, number four, allowing limited day hour stands with sale from onsite. I, I would agree in having. A reduced hours or a limited hours so that, that there can be some moving, but I'd like to see that widened. So, you know, four days a week or even six days a week, having one day where it's not allowed and it has to be moved off, I think is. Is makes it so that it's not there permanently. I do think the, for the small gardeners shouldn't be any costs or if anything, very, very reduced. I mean. It's two thousand nine hundred for a minor use permit is just way off the scale for anybody who's. Looking to try and sell the sweat of their brow to the market it to the neighborhood, trade it to the neighborhood. So I do, I, you know, people are going to be coming up and trying these things out. It's not going to be their main perspective. They're going to be scattered all over the neighborhood. It will be very much a statistical type something that arises up. And if more people do it, it'll be because they're organizing to do it and they're helping more on the food. So. That's my comments. Thank you.
Katari Joan, please go ahead.
Hi. I'm mute. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, so in speaking to my neighbors, I will tell you. Everyone was very much against having farm stands in the neighborhood. We think that that will harm the quality of life we have. It will be. Prob- I mean, we see it already just with people who sometimes even get lost or not familiar with the neighborhoods, having lots of people driving. And I also agree with Neil Hancock. We don't want to be encouraging driving. Very much what we, what I'd like to see, and everybody seemed to agree that I've spoken to. Is that the city should be having someplace where people can sell their product. And as part of this permitting fee, which I agree is rather high. And probably prohibitive to some people. That there could be some places two days a week, like at the Filetti Ranch or, you know, another kind of. Farmer's market, so to speak, that's really local as opposed to the people who come in from outside the area. Everyone liked the idea of CSA. Nobody had a problem that you grow things, you have CSA. I think with regard to hours, as long as we've got that nuisance abatement of the equipment. I agree. I mean, I get up early in the morning to water. I sometimes do things at seven thirty, eight o'clock at night in my garden. So I don't have a problem as long as there's no noise. That is connected with that. And what I would like that I have not heard at all with this, and it could apply to, you know, the stay, having some sort of community. Farmer's market stand area. Is for you to look at the cottage food industry and there may be some sort of formula. That you have a base. A base permit fee, but then based upon how much people would. Would submit annually what their gross revenue was. And based upon that. You might have some sort of stepped surcharge. So that, for example, yes, you don't make a lot of money off of growing apples and selling them by the pound. So that, for example, yes, you don't make a lot of money off of growing apples and selling them by the pound, but people make, I know people who sell gourmet eggs for $20 a dozen. Um, or, you know, specialty honey or jams for $12 a bottle. So take a look at that, um, and that might help with the permit dollars.
The Community Alliance with Family Farmers, please go ahead.
Luke, can you hear me?
You're coming through loud and clear.
Excellent. Hi, this is Evan Wig. I'm a Sonoma County resident, also part of a Community Alliance with Family Farmers, local nonprofit organization. I just first off, want to really commend the city of Katati for having this conversation and and opening, uh, opening the the possibilities for this local food production. So just really appreciate the work that's gone into this, especially to Autumn. So I guess the two things on this particular item I just wanted to point out is, you know, when you talk to to most kids these days, you you ask them, you know, where where does milk come from or where does an apple come from? You know, their answer is is the grocery store. And that's what most folks, you know, most kids and most people have their experience of of food is that you you go to a big store and you purchase, you you purchase food without any real connection of where it's actually coming from. And so I just think that not just local food production in in the form of market gardens is important for people to see, but actually the full circle of the food system from field to the moment they can actually go buy an apple and see where it came from. See, uh, you know, hear the chickens as they're purchasing those dozen eggs. Hopefully those eggs aren't $20 a dozen. Uh, and that's that's sort of my second, the my second point is, you know, when you, the the most important thing about a farmer's market or a farm stand is that it reduces the number, uh, the middlemen, the number of steps that it takes for a local food product to get from the field to the to the to the plate. And what that also allows that to do is it allows for farmers to keep their prices lower, for the farmers to get more money out of it, but also for the consumer to get it at cheaper rate. Because that the the more steps you have to go through, the more expensive it's going to get. Because you have to pay for the distribution or the management of a CSA or all the things. Certainly, obviously, it's still in support of CSAs and and other, you know, sales outlets. But that farm stand really allows for both the prices to remain low for both the farmer as well as 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 the consumer. And I just think that something like urban agriculture, something like these market gardens can allow for residents to to have a side, a side, uh, you know, side hustle, right? The the ability for somebody who's maybe taking care of relatives, watching kids, to have a little extra income. And so I just really encourage folks to to consider reducing the requirements for setting up a farm stand in the community. Um, and I person, from a personal perspective, I sure wish that I could just walk down the street and and purchase food from my neighbors. I just think that would be the coolest coolest thing and I think would actually increase property values and and quality of life. So thank you so much for having this conversation and for taking my comments.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Perfect. All right. I'm going to stop for a second, check with the council. It is now just about nine o'clock. Are we good to go to the next section? Or do we want to take a five or 10 minute short break for everybody? If anybody wants to take a break, do me a favor, put your thumbs up online where I can see it here on the participants list. If I don't see any thumbs going up, I'm going to assume you're good to go here. All right, great. So let's plunge forward then. Same thing, I'd ask the council if they have any comments, questions, and ultimately direction for staff on the items on page forty nine, produce stands and CSA. And let's see who goes up first here. I see Councilmember Ford first.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. I'll try to go through these quickly. I'm in support of number four. Uh, I would opt again for the more, uh, the least onerous uh, options in number five. So five A would be my preference, given the restriction to two days and and out of sight on the other days. I'm quite comfortable with that. I feel like, you know, nobody, nobody complains when the neighbor kids or very few people complain when the neighbor kids set up a lemonade stand and we're talking that level of impact. Produce stands with a use permit in RVL. If we extend crop production to RVL, a produce stand in a combined use permit makes a lot of sense to me because that use permit process would take into account impacts on the neighbors and any any concerns there. Certainly, seven, I think, I think CSA is consistent with our current code retail sales in the field. So I I think we ought to confirm that. And if we extend crop production to RVL, as as felt to me like on number three, we were leaning in that direction, then I would certainly say CSA is still consistent with retail sales in the field, even in RVL. Thanks. Oh, one other thing I wanted to mention, Joan Simon talked about this, wanting to have a place where local sellers could sell their wares. And I think, uh, I love that idea of kind of a mating Katati aggregator table at the farmer's market. And the only way that's going to be feasible is if we start to encourage more grown in Katati agriculture that can actually provide enough produce to fill such a table at the farmer's market. So I think that this this, uh, direction we're headed actually would help to create enough production that would support a mating Katati table at the farmer's market, a grown in Katati table. And I'd I'd like to hear actually from staff at some point some responses to Lisa Moore's question about other products produced from grown on the site. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Actually, I jotted down, circled it, and I missed it. Let's take a break just for a second. That was the one question that jumped out. I'm going to, again, I almost wanted to say assume, I'm going to imagine that it would be allowed use. But let me ask the people who know.
Uh, yes, our our take is that, um, that, yeah, uh, sales of cottage cottage food products would be allowed at the produce stands. There is a state law related to cottage food. You know, that that's fairly permissive as long as environmental health regulations are met that allows people to sell cottage food products. And there's there there are things that are shelf stable typically, you know, things that are safer to produce and sell in a in a in a very informal sort of capacity. So yes, we envision that Katati, that cottage food products would be included. I do want to note that when it comes to egg sales, possibly that might be a little bit tricky if we don't actually allow commercial egg production in Katati, uh, which we currently don't. And it's a topic of discussion here in a minute. So that that would be one little glitch there. But as far as jams, jellies, dried fruits, things like that, yes.
And these would be generated or created by the property itself, not aggregated from an outside partner, someone, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and we would have language in that regard. Yeah, that it needed to be produced onsite at the adjacent, you know, at the adjacent agricultural operation.
Thank you. Councilman Vice Mayor Harvey, please go ahead.
I think Councilmember Sparks was next.
I saw your hand first, but I'm sure you're volunteering.
Oh, I saw hers go up first, so. Happy to go in whatever order. So I'll just go through, it seems to me like number four is sort of a moot point if we're going in the direction of allowing market gardens by right. Then whatever we decide for market gardens would also apply to home gardens, unless staff wants to correct me. I think I think that's how it should be. So then going on to number five A, I would prefer to allow the market gardens, uh, produce stand with those limitations that we discussed by right. And and, you know, to Roy Smith, I, to 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 his point, I hear you about about this being not just an issue of letting people have these nice gardens, but in, but a real issue of food security and making food available to people. And I just want you to know that personally, I would be in favor of expanding the hours even more to let people have access to fresh local food at times when they're available to purchase it, because I know people's work work schedules vary quite a bit. I'm hoping that if we pass this ordinance with a, or pass these zoning changes with a time limit that has support on the council, you know, that that everyone can live with, then as this gets started and we see more of these farm stands, temporary farm stands going up and people get more comfortable with it, maybe a few years down the line, we could come revisit it and and look at those those time restrictions. At least that's that's how I'm thinking about now. Just, you know, let's try to get something that we can all agree on now and 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 try it out for a few years and see how it goes and then take a look. For number six, I would like to see produce stands allowed in the RVL district with the use permit. And, um, to the the Councilmember Moore's point that it'd be nice to see a little bit lower cost use permit, I would be really highly in favor of that and creating, I think that's a great idea, creating a separate type of use permit that we subsidize. I don't think we're going to get a huge number of these. So I don't think it would be a huge cost to the city to subsidize that a little bit, because I agree that $4,000 is a pretty steep price. I am in favor of CSA being an accessory activity for number seven and eight. My only concern with it is if we list it out there, would it start to be such a short list of things that it might seem like we're precluding other things? You know, if we only enumerate a few specific things. So maybe if the wording was like, for example, like after retail sales in the the field, for example, CSAs or something like that. All right, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Harvey, this time it's you for sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. So a couple of things, I think I was going along the same line as Councilmember Sparks. I am not understanding really why four is here. What would the difference be between two, which is market gardens, and an onsite home garden? If you could speak to that, then maybe I'd I'd feel better. They they, what's the difference between an onsite home garden and what we're proposing, which is a market garden? Could you help me with that, Autumn?
Absolutely.
Maybe I'd know whether.
It's a very good question. It has a little bit to do with offering a lot of options. So part of the reason that that number four is there is in the event that we didn't want to do five, right? So I, the idea is just to have more options rather than fewer. And yes, there is a little bit of overlap. But I do want to point out that with with home gardening, that is an accessory use to a residential use. You don't have to come and talk to the city about it at all. Whereas with the market garden, we're talking about creating a new land use designation that would live in the zoning code. And so even if it's a P, even if it's a by right and it's permitted, then really that property owner should be coming and talking to us and getting a zoning clearance, which is free, right? They should come and talk to us and we say, okay, it looks like that will work on your property. Here's all the rules that are associated with it. And so if we then move on to the produce stand option, so this means that with four, someone is doing their home garden. They want to sell some produce. They don't need a zoning clearance. They're not doing something that's related to the market garden land use. But if someone is engaging in a market garden land use, they've come and talked to us and gotten their zoning clearance and they want to have their produce stand, then that is part of their zoning clearance approval as well. And they need to come and meet with us. Does that, does that make sense?
Well, yeah, yes and no. I mean, it's a real, it's a real subtle difference there. And and I guess that what I heard is the council really likes the market garden and I also like the market garden. This seems like, okay, well, maybe I'll just tell you that it's my backyard garden and I'm going to put a stand out there and do it anyways because I don't want to come in and get this zoning clearance and call myself a market, you know? So it 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 kind of, for me, muddies the water. So I like the concept of the market garden and and I guess I wish that we would just stick with with one or the other. I I think that that's too confusing to have two. So that's my thought on that. So then allowing produce stands by use permit in RVL, I am okay with that. I like the suggestion of adding reference to the CSA in retail sales in the field, because I think CSA really wasn't, you know, there when this was originally considered. So that will make it a little bit clearer. But to Councilmember Sparks' point, I agree. It doesn't make it restrict in case there's something else. And I'm okay with eight. Now, the other question I have that keep has was come up on this is a community farm stand or, as Councilmember Ford put it, a table at the farmer's market. My recollection was that there were restrictions at farmer's markets and that's why people couldn't have a table at the farmer's market. It did, am I remembering that incorrectly? Are you aware of that, Autumn? I thought people could not.
I do not know, actually. I do not know.
You know, I thought that was a problem because we've talked about this in some other venue before. And there was a reason that people couldn't bring their produce to a farmer's market.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with those regulations either, but we can look into it by the time we come back.
Yeah, because I mean, I like the concept of that or or I think we've talked about, you know, the possibility of, of, you know, farm stand at at Falletti Ranch if we can't do it at a farmer's market. So I'm open to that as a concept. I I agree with Councilmember Ford. I think that that's that's a great idea. I think Joan brought it up, you know, sometimes people have extra food that they that they kind of want want to do. And I guess I'd like to understand, you know, what are our, you know, what are our responsibilities if if we were to do that aggregation either at a table at the farmer's market or or say at a table at at Falletti Ranch? And then lastly is the time restrictions that were were brought up. Many things that we've done over time. We we are a small community and we seem to kind of like start out small and see how that works and then, you know, kind of move from there. It's kind of worked for us. I think people have seen, you know, that with the the fast food ordinance. You know, we started very, very, very restricted. And then over time, as, you know, the world changed, we we kind of looked at specific situations and we opened that up. And, you know, so we have have had a tendency of doing that. So I agree with Councilmember Sparks that, you know, over time we can look at that. But but as the mayor has pointed out a couple of times, we're talking about residential areas. The primary place that these are is residential areas. And I think that that, you know, that's very different than a commercial property that its purpose is to be commercially open. So I think we always have to have that balance. So I like the restrictions again that we're into and I and I think we should start out and then, you know, see how that works and if we need to expand it. So that, those are my thoughts, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm looking down the list. I don't see your hand up yet, Councilmember Moore. Did you want to comment at this point in time?
Sure. Thank you. Sometimes I allow the other council members to speak so as to not be redundant on some of the things. But I would be in support of five B. Six, I don't have an issue with. And eight, I don't have an issue with.
All right, thank you. So let's see, general thoughts. I'd like the idea of the aggregator table. I think that's a great idea and I think that works. It's kind of a nice scheme valve for some of the restrictions that I think are good. And I think most of us tend to support with the market gardens in the neighborhoods for selling hours to numbers of days. And I do agree, I I'm not at the place where I want, I'm open to more hours. But I certainly suspect if I had a few years, knowing that I will be here, but if I were sitting here a few years from now and I found this was working smoothly and we revisited this, I think I would be open to it. I think that's how you build some trust in the community and with the neighborhoods where this is a new approach that this is going to work. And not only is it not going to be a problem, And not only is it not gonna be a problem, but you may well get to like it, uh, so I think that, I think that could work. Um, I will note, it's been brought up a few times, the use permit's expensive and that is a big hit. But I'll note, this is not for, I believe, and Autumn will ask you to correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe the market garden, if we choose to go by right, which I'm kinda hearing from a lot of people, a lot of my colleagues. If that were to be the end of result, there's no need for zoning clearance for people in most of the residential neighborhoods. To do at least up to a half acre with the restrictions of Martin Garden. So the use permit would be for a place where somebody wants to do something bigger and commercial. Was likely in our R V L or, or, or zones, and I do think even though it's a chunk of change. I think if you're gonna get serious and you're doing something that big, that's a pretty small cost to pay. Realistically, before this, you would've had to get land in the unincorporated county to do this sort of thing, rather than use your own residential property. So I, I think it's workable at that size, I would agree that if we were asking for a cost like this from. Well, Joan Simon with Neighborhood Garden, for example, or Susan Hardy, yeah, then I'd be concerned, but just, just out there for thoughts. So um with that, I could support four, five A, six, seven and eight. With, and I'm gonna be a broken record tonight, forgive me, my friends, but I wanna repeat it to make sure staff hears it. Uh, that number one, uh, we're really clear about nuisance abatement. And I might ask you, Autumn, to speak to how that process works in a second, that how effective it is for the public, how available it is. How responsive it might be to complaints. And then secondly, if we also include that language that we discussed that I ran by Mr. Barker. About calling out that in the case of conflicts, neighborhood conflicts related to use permits for these uses. That the intent is to protect the primacy of residential use in residential areas. If we have that, I, I think I could, I could support this all when this comes back. And if, could you speak just a little bit, cuz we were gonna spend some time on that, this might be a good time to do it, cuz I think many in the public would like to know. Can they actually depend on our nuisance uh program, how effective is, will it really work for neighborhoods? Some of what I've seen the last few years, what we have in place now, I believe it can, but I think it'd be helpful for you to talk to them, and I know I'd like to hear about it too.
Yeah, I mean, we, we think it is effective, and um so here's, here's the process. It is uh, you know, it is driven by uh, you know, complaints. So we, we hear that there is an issue or there might be a code violation, we assign a staff person to, to do some research, look into the matter. Uh, we'll contact the property owner and talk to them about their intention to abate the issue. You know, if we do find that there's a violation of the code, um, they're officially noticed uh to, to abate. And we typically um are able to resolve the code enforcement issues. In a thirty to ninety day timeframe typically, it kinda depends on, you know, the number of complaints we get in any given week. Uh, you know, but we do have dedicated staff time for code enforcement. Uh, if you go to the city's webpage in the community development section, there is um actually a page devoted to code enforcement. It describes the, the process, um, has the form that someone would fill out if they would like to make a complaint. Um, and uh sort of describes what, you know, how it works, what can, what one can expect. So we try to make it pretty transparent and accessible uh to the public if they're in need of it.
Good, let me ask you one thing, you mentioned code violation triggering this, and it sounds like it's responsive and effective. But what if we had something, and this is the worst use scenario that I think I had concern, and maybe some of my colleagues, I think give it some concern too. Is what if we had a use permit in place that all of a sudden subsequently was found to be problematic for a neighbor or a group of neighbors? Um, that's the worst case situation I'm asking about, and I wonder with this John Barker language that I've been talking about. Would that work in concert with the uh nuisance abatement process to be able for us to deal with uh? Somebody in a use permit?
I'd, I'd like to speak to that. Yeah, Mayor Lammon, so the, the issue with, or the idea with the use permit is you analyze how something's proposed to be used, how a land use proposed to act. And then the context it's in, and you put limitations on how that occurs to address the potential for impacts. Uh, some, some cities call them a conditional use permit because you condition the use to minimize the impacts on the surrounding properties. Um, to your point, if someone was doing something that was expressly not allowed. Or act, operating in a way that was expressly um identified as, as not to occur in the use permit. That's a violation of the use permit, very easily addressed. But to your point, I think if, if a use permit was granted that allowed activities X, Y and Z. And that occurred over time and, and, you know, over, out of, after a period of time, new folks moved in around that use that was already existing. And just were unhappy with it, we got a, a complaint, we go look at it, and they're operating in keeping with the approvals that they were granted. They have a right to do that, and that right does stay with the land.
Okay, well, this is kind of a problem, and I wasn't speaking about new people though, I was talking about existing residents, cuz I think we all know. We can plan for every potential outcome as much as we want, we're not gonna cover them all. And my concern with the use permit is despite the best outreach, we may miss something that will only become evident in practice. And I think we've all seen that in our daily lives with all, all areas of human endeavor. And that's why I talked to Mr. Barker about language, which he agreed was a common legal practice and completely dual for us. That would mention if we have subsequent problems with a use permit, in determining how to deal with it. The weight would be to the residential usage, and that's what I wanna nail down tonight, cuz that's important, that's certainly, that's my vote on most, most. Many things in here, and I think some of my colleagues perhaps as well.
So to that point, I think we could, we could have blanket language that lives in a crop production use permit. That references that the base use in the base zone is residential. So then, and it's, it's important, so we did not have an agricultural zoning district in Kattah. So all of the uses that are proposed will be agricultural activities on residential properties. And so having that, that um kind of base language would allow you to point back to expectations for residential allowances. And a whole laundry list of requirements that lived throughout the entire municipal code. That talk about expectations for residential land uses, such as noise standards.
I think language like that might be workable for me, particularly if we added one more line that's said. And will be used in any dispute resolution that may arise related to the uh use permit. And of course, typically, since I'm calling it the Barker language, we probably have Mr. Barker writing and not me and you. But something along those lines, that called out what you said and, and pointed out. If in the unlikely event we have a dispute, a resolution that has to be disputed, this is where the weight lays. Does this sound workable to you, uh, Mr. House?
Absolutely, and we will confirm that with Mr. Barker when we come back with, before the council.
Great, I, I think that would be important, I think if we get that uh, all good. So that's what I have, so this is, we have a few more of these to do, it is now ten after nine. I would like to ask if we could take about a five or six minute break before we continue, if the council is willing to do that. And we'll make it quick, cuz I know everybody's waiting and has a lot more to say, so we'll be right back. So Mr. Ford, I see your face right next to me, I have a question if you could help your mayor with. I called for five minutes recess, but I didn't jot the time down, do you know what time I, we're kicking this back off, anybody remember offhand?
One minute ago.
Well, five minutes, five or six, well, I said five or six, so there we go, perfect, thank you, Ben. All right, welcome everybody back, so I believe we're ready for another discussion on our next topic. Which is public and city council direction on, we've had produce stands, um, community gardens, I believe, is next, Ms. Bus?
Yes, so Kevin can move us forward to the next two slides, I think. And we're gonna, we're gonna speed up here, at least I'm gonna speed up. I think we've done the heavy lifting so far. Uh, ah, here we go, that's perfect, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to community gardens, and uh we just have a few um items to, to put out there here. So as I've mentioned earlier, uh currently, community gardens are allowed with a minor use permit. Uh, in all of the residential zones in the city. And so one strategy that the council might, might choose to go with is to allow community gardens uh by right. Or as a P permitted, um, that would call into need the um, the zoning clearance letter that we were discussing earlier. Okay, so that's, that's one option. Uh, another option, and not mutually exclusive, is the idea to allow community gardens in city facilities. Uh, in properties that are zoned open space recreation, which is O S R, uh with a use permit. Uh, because currently, that's, that's not actually um, uh allowed at this time on city properties. And then finally, we have the option, and again, this is not a code-related uh strategy. But the idea of encouraging private community gardens in multi-family developments. And because those would be in, contained entirely within a private property. Uh, they would be just another feature of the open space within a multi-family development, just like a playground, uh, just like uh little parklets. And so those would not actually come into um uh the approval process that we've talked about for some of these other, these other uses. And so just a couple pretty pictures here, here's a community garden in Portland. Uh, next slide, please, you can tell they have a lot of water there. And community garden in California, uh, this is in Oakland, uh, California. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, and here we are, our table, so I'm gonna turn this back over to you, Mayor Lammon, for discussion.
Thank you, well, I'm gonna go right to the public on this, once again, I'll ask everybody who wants to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand. We're on back at page fifty-three, talking about community gardens, and I believe it's fair to say, this isn't so much a new thing. It's something we've hadn't seen in Kattah before, but it's looking at some potential expanded uses and expanded places for this to happen perhaps. So love to hear your directions and questions on this for both the council and the staff. So I'll turn it over to uh our deputy city clerk, and let's see what public comment we have.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon, uh Roy Smith, please go ahead.
Okay, um, yes, thank you. Um, I'll just try and say that I, I would like to see all other, further than that. In that there needs to be some form of incentive or support at the, the uh, the city or county level to make these community gardens happen. Obviously, if it's at a, some kind of a, of a residential location. Um, and they're doing a community garden, they are incurring costs in order to provide a service to the, to the local, local society. So there needs to be some kind of, of support behind it, not just allowing it. Um, again, we're not gonna get any takers on any of this, I would be amazed if you get two market gardens pop up in, in this. None of this is economic, this is about creating resilience and security, not people making money. You do not make money selling broccoli, you lose money. What, what you can do though, you can create a, a public good, that's what we're talking about, it's a public good. So community gardens by right, and then a structure that, for example, would take people in low-density areas. And then a structure that, for example, would take people in low-density areas, or you take landowners in low, low-density, and you provide some kind of support for them so that they want to open up and give plots to the public. We have a lot of people who do not have garden space, who need to develop the skill and want to come back in connection with people and the ground, the earth and plants. This is a public good. It's not enough to just permit it. We have to go farther. That's all, that's my comment. Thank you.
Kattati Joan, please go ahead.
Hi. I would suggest that you take a look at Seattle. There's multiple community gardens in Seattle that I've visited, because friends of mine live there. My understanding is that actually, to participate in the community garden up in Seattle, there is a fee that's charged. My friends, I believe, pay something so that they get the space so that they can grow their own vegetables. I'm not sure how the hours work. My understanding is that you have, you go and you work your plot, but then you also have to contribute a certain number of volunteer hours to keep the place clean and free of vermin, et cetera. I think it's wonderful that it would be very educational. I spoke to someone off of Cypress, who lives Cypress, very close to the main drag. She was actually interested in doing something like that on her property if permitted. So we might find somebody that the city could partner with if it was not on city land. And that's pretty much what I would have staff take a look at in terms of the particulars of how it might work. Thank you.
Raina Yagi, please go ahead.
Hi there. Just wanted to echo my sentiments about particularly into Roy's. I just, and just a positive reminder about community gardens in particular, that they are such an asset to the community, and really, as Roy's put it really well, a public good. My experience in Petaluma at the urban farm there is we had found through a community needs assessment that low-income families and seniors were at some of the most food insecure folks. And oftentimes, a lot of those folks are living in multi-unit, small apartment-type buildings with no growing space whatsoever. And so in this increasingly expensive county, state, which we're all familiar with, there is, there is no reality to, you're not gonna have a line of people out the door trying to A, buy parcels of land, or B, even rent it at this point. So there isn't almost a bigger, there's almost a bigger potential for the community garden aspect of this whole, of this whole piece of legislation that would be such a bonus to the community. But it will start to hit on things besides giving folks, low-income families, and anyone who doesn't have growing space the opportunity to do so. But you're growing food to help supplement your budget, you're growing food in, as I personally experienced, to help supplement in emergency situations. Like, the list goes on. And I'm sure you've all heard a lot of aspects of this before, but I just wanted to reiterate that this is actually a bigger component to this piece that I feel grows really strongly, just purely based on the fact that, like, growing isn't, you really don't make money, and I really don't wanna share my salary of what I make in a small farm. I have to work, like, one or two other jobs just to make it work. And so that's sort of another testament to why I think we should really ease off of some of these restrictions, because it actually might preclude from people from even trying this out. So all that to say is, there's a lot of different ways to look at this. And community gardens have several different definitions, many of which don't actually charge. I'm not a fan of ones that do rental plots. It's a bit restrictive, but I'm talking shared growing space. And we can all define that as a community. That's the most important part, is that community gardens are about the people that are in this room, and there aren't as well, that come together with a shared need, and, and grow food for a bigger, a greater need. And so there, there's a lot of different ways to do it, and I look forward to doing that as a community and to the city council or through the city. Like, I think there's a lot to be said of this, and I think we still need to hear some more voices about what we'd like, how we'd like to see that develop. So, thank you.
Jenny Blaker, please go ahead.
Hi. I just wanted to point out that there are at least two very successful community gardens in Rona Park. There may be more than one. The one I know best is the one at Lydia Commons, which might be good to look at as a role model. It's on Rona Park City property. I don't believe they have any restriction on hours, and I don't really know why anybody would need to restrict hours. Again, unless there was equipment, but I don't, you know, mostly people just have small veggie plots that they work by hand. And there wouldn't need to be a sort of nine-to-five restriction on that. That's it, really. Just the idea of looking at some of the local ones to see how they're working and, and how they could be a model for community gardens in Kattati. Thanks.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Thank you for that. And I see a hand up from Councilmember Sparks, so let's let you lead off.
Thank you. I just had a question for Autumn about the, I, I thought that I heard that we don't currently allow community gardens in open space recreation, but I think that we do with a minor use permit. So I was wondering, is there something about it being city property that there's some further restriction on it beyond just what's in our permitted uses table?
Let me check. I might have misspoken. I misspoke. Yes, you're absolutely right. So yes, the, in the OSR district, you can have a community garden with a minor use permit. I, the, but you're correct that the, you know, the, the primary gist here is the idea of community gardens on city-owned properties.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just speak to these real quick. I, I would like to see us allow community gardens by right, so like, number nine. I would like to stick with the language that, whatever we settle on for market gardens in terms of the, the time limit on mechanized equipment, and just strike the work hours requirement for all the same reasons we talked about before. For number ten, I, I like the language about having a partnership with a community organization to, to set up a community garden on city land. I would like to either leave that as a minor use permit, or I, I would really like to see something lower cost, because if I'm somebody who wants to set up a community garden, coming up with eighteen hundred dollars seems pretty steep, especially if we're trying to expand food opportunities for low-income residents to participate in. It just seems like very expensive. So I don't know if there's a way to require a partnership with the community organization so we have some accountability in case, like, plots get overgrown, or those are some concerns that were brought up last time. Without the expense of a, a use permit or even a minor use permit, that, that would be great. And then eleven, yes, I encourage private community gardens in multifamily developments. I think that would be a wonderful use for some of the shared open space that we see in these developments. That, in a lot of places, it currently just sits as like a grass field that you don't see really get too much use, and expanding that to a community garden would be really great. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford. Oh, wait a minute, excuse me. Vice Mayor Harvey, I think you had your hand up before Councilmember Ford. Forgive me.
That's okay. It's all right. We're, we're able to be flexible about these things.
It's nine-thirty. You know I'm gonna start losing track.
So allow community gardens by right in residential districts. I am generally okay with that. I like using the same stipulations that we put in the market gardens. I would like to add a couple of things that were in some of the other cities' things. One is before the community garden is started, that they have to have a soil dangers and toxicity report, and that's mentioned on page thirty-two. And I think that that's kind of important, because it's a separate, you know, separate from someone's residence. So you, if you're gonna have the community gardening in there, I think it would be worthwhile to make sure that the land is okay. And secondly, I would like to see some rules around a management plan. I believe on page thirty and thirty-one, one of the cities called them operating rules. And I would like to see this plan submitted annually. And my reason for that is we had a community garden. It was sort of across from Oliver's, and it went into extreme disrepair. And I had people complain to me for years. And, you know, staff tried and tried and tried to get hold of, of the different folks that were supposedly in charge of it and couldn't. And finally, you know, gave up, and it's now, you know, cleared land. But it was a real big problem for the neighbors, because no one was managing it. So these operating rules that are mentioned, I would like to see that. And the reason that I ask for them to be actually reviewed or resubmitted annually is so that we can have someone to go to that's managing it so that if there's a problem, you know, we, we kind of have current information. Because I really don't wanna have to waste staff's time, you know, trying to hunt down someone if there's an issue. So that, that's what I would like to add to that. I am okay with community gardens of city facilities. I'm okay with looking at different forms of, of permits for that, open to that. And by all means, I think that we should encourage private community gardens. I can remember my grandmother lived in a HUD complex down in Petaluma for a while, and they had a beautiful little community garden that, you know, that the old folks would get out there, and they loved, you know, growing all their vegetables and things. So I think we should encourage that, and I know that they, that they enjoyed it a lot. So that's all I have for right now, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. So I have lived in both Eugene and Seattle, which have thriving community garden programs, both of which are run by the city. And so in number ten, my only discomfort is, is I, I don't wanna put in the code that a community organization or institution, other than the city, has to be the manager. I could imagine the rec. department applies for a grant to establish and, and run a community garden program at some point in the future, and I would want that to be possible under our code. Other than that, I'm, I'm in agreement with most of what both Councilmembers Parks and Vice Mayor Harvey said. But I have a little, I'm, I'm comfortable with the requirement that the operator of the community garden under number nine have some kind of annual check-in requirement. I don't really wanna require somebody to review the operating procedures every year. That's a little much to me. Thanks.
All right. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. This has been a burr in my side for years. The community garden across from Oliver's, at the, at the end of La Salle, has been taken out because it never got maintained. We've just taken out the food forest at Pocket Park, because we did not have people maintaining that. And that was all supposed to be done by volunteers, and, and there just wasn't the commitment there to keep that up. So now it's gonna be a, a different type of park there. So I'm not in favor of by right in all residential, so I'm not really in favor of nine. I would support ten, and I would support ten and concur not to beat a dead horse again, but concur with Councilmember Sparks that, you know, maybe a minor use permit would be sufficient there, and then looking at, you know, the, the restructuring of those types of fees. And of course, I would encourage private community gardens, although I think there does need to be some sort of check-in. But if it's on private property, that's gonna be their issues, and that'll be up to the homeowners or whomever on that. That's where I am on the, on community gardens.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Okay, in general, I think some of these things have been mentioned. For community gardens at any location in the city, I would like, I do think it's a good idea to have toxicity testing, particularly in any property on city facilities, because I think we'd have some responsibility there. You probably wanna know what's in the soil, because we don't always know what the use was some time back. I, again, would like to see restrictions on synthetic pesticides and fertilizers. We've tried to control that where we can control it in the city. This is a place where we're listing some things up. So let's put that marker down right here. I really like the Vice Mayor's idea of a management plan. I look at past community gardens, and they've almost always fallen apart and become a problem for the community. I was going to mention the food forest, because I think it was a perfect example of something well-intentioned and a great idea that turned into just really a big problem for that neighborhood for years and years and years. The bottom line is that volunteerism or things based on grants, even, don't pay for something, don't provide rolling costs for something that's intended to be an ongoing program. So revenue has to come from somewhere, and that's why I am open to requiring partnership with community organizations or institutions. But I could certainly agree to change that to, instead of would, would likely. That's the way I would see it likely going. Let's see what I did there. But the situation become where perhaps we found we were in a revenue place, we had a great grant to cover some startup costs. Maybe it's a possibility. So if I leave the door ajar, I can go along with that. I wouldn't wanna make it wide open, though, like, because I do wanna kind of lean on that, because I don't know if the city wants to get into the food forest business. That didn't work out good, too good for us last time. So other than that, I am fine with community gardens by right in residential districts. Again, with the caveat we said before about nuisance abatement and the language call-out for any problems that arise. I do think, as far as hours, we moved on those a little bit with the market garden, and I think the general direction was, there was a limit for use of mechanized equipment and noise-producing activities from nine to five, and we're not defining the other areas, because as long as it doesn't create an issue, people should be able to do what they want. And I think with the nuisance abatement, and again, that blocker language in there about if any problems arise, I think we have protections. So I could certainly support that if that works for my colleagues. So with that, I like the idea also, I think I'd like to maintain the minor use permit just to have, that's not a difficult and onerous cost for a community garden in a city facility or an open space, particularly because it likely will be a partnership of some sorts with a nonprofit, a community organization, or some sort of institution. And I'd like staff to spend the time and go through it, and I don't know if I wanna do it without that revenue for the time involved. So I think that covers most of it for me. So let's see here. I'm not seeing any hands up, so we got through this one-on-one pass. Is enough direction for you staff on community gardens from the public and the council?
Yes, thank you.
Beautiful. Let's move on.
Okay. Next slide or two, Kevin. Okay, here we go. Just one topic that I'm putting forward. You're welcome to come up with other ideas, too. So hens and eggs. So right now, just as a quick reminder, too, roosters are only allowed in the open space conservation zoning district, OSC. So when we're talking about these, these limits, we're really, for the most purposes, we're talking about hens. Okay. So the idea is, so currently, chickens are allowed up to twenty per property. You can get a minor use permit potentially to allow one to have more than twenty chickens. But in all cases, those are non-commercial uses. So the question is, would the council have any interest in allowing commercial hen keeping in the city? And, you know, would, would the rural residential and/or RVL zones make the most sense for that? The idea I put forward was to have a minimum property size of one acre, and then other standards would be set by the use permit. There are standards in the code related to chicken keeping. There's standard sort of nuisance language that we have for other types of uses. But specifically for chickens, the setbacks are required, they're twelve feet from the side and rear of, of property lines, and twenty feet from neighboring dwellings. So that's, that's what we have on the books right now. You know, so the question did come up about egg sales at produce stands, too, from a market garden. And so one thing that, that this strategy here does not cover is the idea of people selling from a market garden necessarily.
uh, selling their eggs if they were not in the RR or RVL zone. So that's, so that's a question for consideration too. Um, and that is all I have to say on that one. So.
All right. Well, I think we're getting the hang of this. We seem to be speeding up and doing this, uh, very quickly. Let's go to public comment on the issue of hens in Katati and potentially expanding the number allowed and uses thereof.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Pat Gilardi, please go ahead.
Sorry about that. I was muted. Screen looks different from this end. Um, last name is Gilardi. So I have a problem with this particular one. A lot of chickens, um, can be an issue. And I live in the RR. I have chickens. So I, I know when, when you have a problem. Um, flies are not going to get the twenty foot setback. They're going to go beyond twenty feet and that may be your neighbor's yard. And when you develop a problem with chickens, be that rats or flies, it's not something that you can fix overnight. It takes a while. Um, I, I will admit that I had a problem with vermin in my own chicken coop last year and I have weeded my flock down to four chickens so that we have, because I can't put any of them down. They're my older ladies and so they're going to retire on my property. But, um, we have to rebuild the chicken coop because, because we had a problem. And it's been a year. It's under control, but it takes a while. And so I just think that this one can be problematic and, and I would really discourage um, beyond twenty. I mean, I, I, I don't know what number you're thinking of, but I'm thinking if it's on an acre, you're thinking a hundred might be okay. And I would just advise that that's probably not a good idea. Um, and I want to bring up way back when I was on the city council, I was planning commissioner, I was also a 4H leader. And we had rabbit gate in Katati. I don't know if anybody remembers that. We made the evening news where a young lady had about a hundred rabbits. And the flies were literally stuck to the ceiling on the neighbors' houses, they're in, inside their houses and they could not use their backyards. Because some of these, some of these, this is not a crop. This is an animal. And, and so there are issues that come with them and it can make for a very unpleasant living experience for the neighbors. So that's all I have to say about this. I just, I would discourage it. Thank you.
Apologies for mispronouncing your name, Ms. Gilardi. Roy Smith, please go ahead.
Yes. There you go. Okay. Am I on? Yep.
You're on. We hear you good.
Okay. Um, thank you. So the issue with animals, of, of course, is, is a tricky one. Primarily because again, we don't have the skills anymore. Um, the irony being that this is a chicken region historically and where I'm sitting right now is on a old chicken farm. Um, but because we've lost the skills, doesn't mean that we restrict what people can do. That's, that's a misuse of power. It's a misuse of the state. The state has a responsibility to maintain freedoms, not to restrict freedoms unless all other methods have been tried. Um, what we could do is something like this is you, you, again, we are not just permitted, but we actually encourage it because we need to relearn the skills and we need to reestablish food self-sufficiency. What we could do is a, a free permit process that you register, you know, you have a registration. Um, as you said before, you mentioned before with, um, you know, learning the rules. And there can be a best practices, um, assessment or simply a, a, you know, a packet. And if you don't comply with it, in other words, there's a complaint, then you have to go back and, and redo your operation. It doesn't have to cost anything. Um, it's, it's skill-based. There are ways to do this that actually end up encouraging the public to do the right thing as opposed to either allowing it or disallowing it. That's an extremely clumsy way of going about this type of thing. The other thing I would say is that animals are absolutely crucial to food production. There is no way you can do a single cycle or a one-direction cycle of food production where you take nutrients from the soil, send them out to the humans and then have nothing coming back in. There was an earlier mention of not allowing artificial fertilizers. Well, if you're not using artificial fertilizers, you're using manure. If you have chickens, you have a cycle right there. You have a way of handling pests. You don't need pesticides. You have a way of having manure inputs through the chicken manure. You have a way of producing food. If we try to divorce animals from our vegetable production, vegetable production will eventually fail. I think that's all I'll say for this moment. Thank you.
Katati Joan, please go ahead.
Hi, Joan here. Um, I'm very much along with what Pat Gilardi said. Um, several of my neighbors have had chickens over the years by keeping them small. Usually they've had a dozen or less. It hasn't been a problem. But one thing that hasn't been talked about, uh, with animals is the impact of fires on our area. We don't know what's going to be happening, but the combination of fires, climate change, development is changing the patterns of wildlife. And we're seeing in my neighborhood, um, we're, we're seeing a, a lot more wildlife than we used to. They're being forced into areas where there was landfill. Um, I do want to, something one of my neighbors recommend, uh, asked that I, I bring up because she was here when Katati was founded and has, you know, participated for many years. The reality is that Katati made decisions several years ago that there'd be more landfill, um, that we wouldn't be, you know, agriculture at a certain level. And, um, I just really hesitate to be expanding the number, the number of chickens or other fowl, for that matter, that are allowed. We, we're also seeing bird diseases that are happening. We don't understand the science of a lot of this. Um, but I don't believe that expanding the number of chickens and meat, and I'm not a vegetarian, although I don't eat a lot of meat. Um, I'm not in favor of expanding that without really knowing what the impacts are going to be as we move forward into a different world. So I, I kind of believe like if it's not broken, why are you fixing it? Right now, the number of chickens seems to be viable. Um, leave it as it is.
Maddie Hirschfeld, please go ahead.
Hi, this is, um, this is Janet Orchard. Actually, I'm borrowing Maddie's, um, laptop so I can speak. My, my other one device would not work to get onto the meeting, so I hope that's okay. So Janet Orchard, I live out here on Cypress in Katati. Um, and I just want to say that I share Pat Gilardi's concerns. Um, and I would ask really very strongly that we exercise restraint with this decision. Um, I think this is, you know, I, I know I always say un- you know, frequently invoke unintended, unintended consequences, but I think this is one that has, um, some real potential for that. Uh, we do have a history in Katati of, of problems with too many animals. There's no question. I know that Rabbit Gate was before my time, but I think, I don't think that's been the only one. We had the proliferation down around Pete's and so forth. And I think that I, I think more thought, I just think that this is probably, um, something that we should tread lightly. I really like a lot of what I'm hearing tonight about finding a way to get good ideas underway and finding ways that where people can all live together and which is, which is basically why we have rules, right? So people can live together. So not to go full bore on this one because I think there are potentially a lot of concerns with chickens. Um, I personally have real concerns about living next to, I don't know what, again, I don't know what the scope of this might be, but if I, if a hundred chickens is what we're thinking, I have real concerns personally about living next to a hundred chickens. So, um, thank you for listening. Those are my comments.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Perfect. All right. Let's bring it back to the council and see if we have any raised hands. Who would like to lead off the discussion on the subject of hens? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. We just can't get away from the chickens, can we? Regardless of what we do. And I do remember the rabbit gate. Um, I would be in favor of, um, the existing ordinance allows for up to twenty chickens. Is that correct, Ms. Bus? Yeah, I'm think, I think we're good with that. Thank you.
That is correct. Um, yeah, I want to point out that, that it, we also have the provision that with a minor use permit, uh, so a person could request to have more chickens than twenty. And there's no, I didn't find any specific parameters associated with that, like any maximum or anything like that. It's just, it's an option. Um,
Just in the, just in the RR?
No, that's, that's anywhere in the city where, where chickens are allowed. Yeah. So, so chickens are allowed in any of the residential districts and the limit is the same. It's twenty, uh, twenty chickens, twenty hens per property. But if one applies for a minor use permit and receives it, one could have more than that.
And there's no cap on what that would be?
Uh, apparently not. I didn't see that in the code. But that's the code as it is. So the question really is for the, for the council here is the question of commercial versus non-commercial use. Because that currently all chicken keeping is non-commercial in Katati, regardless of number of chickens.
Okay. So, so I would be in support of, um, non-commercial chickens in Katati.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Harvey, followed by Councilmember Sparks and Ford, please.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, I was around when we went, um, and put in the ordinance for the chickens. There was a lot of discussion and a lot of community input. And we ended up with, um, you know, the regulations that we have based upon a lot of community input. And I don't see a whole lot of reason, um, to change this. Um, as, uh, Pat Gilardi pointed out, you know, there are, there are unintended consequences to people having chickens. I don't have chickens. I live in RR, yet the people all around me have chickens. And I get the benefit of the rodents and I get the benefit of the flies. Now, you know, I know I live in a rural residential area and that, that's life. But, you know, there are consequences to this. So, um, I think twenty is good. The other thing as was pointed out, um, I think, um, by Joan, other animals are coming into the area, um, because of other things. Um, we have, um, had, um, mountain lion that regularly comes through. And it, I believe, I don't know for a fact, but I believe it's because there is food sources like chickens, um, you know, in, in the area and they're, they're looking for food. So, um, I think that the ordinance that we have is just fine and I don't, I have not heard of any folks with properties wanting to go into commercial business. So I would just as soon, um, leave what we have. And that's what I have.
All right. Councilmember Sparks, please.
Thank you. Um, I would like to make a, a plea to those of you who say, let's, let's just keep it how it is, um, to consider a different angle, which is that, um, in all of the residential zones, chickens are already allowed and we're already getting, you know, whatever unintended side effects there are from the chickens. We already have those. My neighbor has a bunch of chickens. I don't really have any issues, but they're here. They're in the city already. I would love it if I could walk across the street and just buy some eggs from my neighbor who already has the chickens. So I, I don't see that there would be any adverse impact whatsoever to allowing the chickens that are already laying eggs to, uh, in Katati to letting people sell those eggs at their, with this, all the same provisions that we talked about for the vegetables and the farm stands. Um, I, I would love to see us allow the, that chicken keeping to, um, convert into a little extra income if people have extra eggs that they could sell. Um, one other point, uh, looking at the, the limit, it really, maybe somebody can explain this to me, but it, it does not make sense to me why the limit should be the same on a tiny parcel in neighborhood medium as it is on a huge multi-acre plot of land. It, it seems to me that a, a large plot of land, I don't know exactly what the right number is. I'm not qualified to set what that is right now, but it seems like it should be bigger than for, for a small, single-family home, um, on a really narrow plot of land that's already allowed to have twenty chickens. It doesn't make sense to me why that limit should just be flat across all different sizes of parcels. So I, I would like to see a little bit more flexibility. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Thanks. Um, I, somewhat similar to Councilmember Sparks, I, I see if, if we left the, the limited twenty hens but allowed sale, that feels like the market garden approach to eggs to me. You know, it's setting a small, small sale, uh, sort of option for people who raise a small number of hens. I am not qualified to, to, I, I could see issues probably multiply when you have forty hens versus twenty or a hundred versus twenty. And, and they don't stay on that larger piece of property. So I could, I could see some reasons for, for leaving the limit at twenty and, and would want more expertise, uh, to bring to bear if we were to raise that. But, but if we leave the limit at twenty, um, I would be comfortable allowing people to sell it at their mar- market garden farm stand or at, at the farmer's market. Assuming that's consistent with county health rules. I'm not, I'm not an expert on raising hens and selling eggs. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm going to just break for a second because I see hands going back up. And I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Harvey and Councilmember Moore, because I think we missed something that staff wanted feedback on. There's two points to this. One, I think, was the concept of having increasing the number of chickens beyond what's currently allowed. And the other concept was even if we don't increase it, would we allow what we currently have since we're going to market garden? But these people would already have any number of twenty or less hens on their property to be able to sell those eggs. And I wonder if both of you could just briefly weigh in if you're okay or not okay in that. So we kind of know where you're at. And I see your hand up, Vice Mayor Harvey, so please go ahead.
Well, that's exactly why I raised my hand. Thank you for that. I'm not, I'm not opposed to people selling any excess eggs, um, that they have. What I, I was, um, reacting to is I don't want to raise the limits. You know, again, as we have said, the, the primary, uh, uh, thing for these, uh, zones is this residential. This is not farming. This is not, you know, a, a, a commercial farming place. So, um, but I am okay with people that have, you know, twenty chickens, if they have, you know, twenty eggs and they can't use a dozen of them to, to sell them. So I would not be opposed to that, but I would be opposed to raising the, then, the number on that. And I also do not know what the health, uh, regulations are around that, but I think staff can look into that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Moore, could you just briefly weigh in on that for us so we can give staff that feedback?
Yeah, I, I would concur with, um, Vice Mayor Harvey. I, I don't have an issue with, um, the market garden type sale of eggs. That's not a problem. I think the, my concern is more of a, a greater commercial sale, i.e., a large production. So I would, you know, the market garden maybe would be fine. And I would, uh, still like to keep it at chick, at twenty for now. You know, uh,
Thank you.
You know, maybe at some point down the road, if there's a real desire and through the use permit if somebody on, you know, a large, larger acreage would like to have more chickens and they can certainly apply for that.
Thank you. I would tend to agree with those comments. Uh, I was a little disturbed to see there's only a minor use permit for somebody to potentially increase this. Uh, I think the reason there's a disparity in the numbers between typical smaller houses in town and the more rural, larger areas is because the number in town is set way too high. And most of the people in my neighborhood had lived in more in traditional, single-family And most of the people in my neighborhood had lived in more in traditional, single-family houses as opposed to the bigger estates. Some of them have chickens. Um, uh, some of them even gasped, do already sell their eggs to their neighbors when they have excess, I believe. I hope we agree with that tonight because I hate to see my neighbor go to jail for this. He's a good guy. But, um, but they don't have that many hens. 20 hens in a backyard in a typical residential neighborhood. I couldn't support that. I really don't see the need to make egg production larger than it is. I don't see the need to make that potentially go to commercial levels in our larger plots because that's a completely different thing and I find it really problematic for a lot of reasons that I think all my colleagues and neighbors have already laid out. I do agree completely though, and I have thought from the onset early dating when I read this, I have no problem for people that already have a garden, a handful of hens who are helping with that manure cycle and doing things, uh, for selling, selling their eggs if they have excess. You know, people typically will barter, uh, they'll use them certainly and if they have excess and they have a farm stand, I think that's a great use if we can make it happen. So I think, did that cover everything you needed to hear on hens? Uh, Autumn?
Can, can I raise one more issue?
Please do. Sorry, I didn't see your hand. It's my fault.
Yeah, thank you for raising that issue of mine, your use permit to get more hens. I think if, I would be most comfortable with saying that, that this commercial egg, you know, selling your eggs applies at the 20 hens or less level. If you apply for more, that's got to be personal use only.
Or at least a use permit perhaps with the other protections we've talked about? Something, yeah, I, I'll go with what you said because I don't like the idea of expanding that. Uh, and I, and I would perfectly, you know, I'd like to go with what you said and also say if somebody wants to expand through what we have in the books, change that MUP to just a, a UP. Uh, because that gives the thing we've seen that's necessary, neighbors a chance to weigh in. And I think we've seen probably most neighbors might not be really conducive to the idea of 20 chickens or greater, particularly if some of the properties are small and right on top of each other. So that's, I, I think I generally agree with your direction and that would be my extra input. And I see, let's see, let me check and see if I'm missing. I see one more hand from Councilmember Sparks for a last word.
Uh, I would not be in favor of, of restricting it only for personal use, um, for more than 20. I, I think, uh, one of the things we're hoping to accomplish is increase, uh, the ability of people to relearn uh, uh, farming techniques and to, um, have a viable source of income on their property. And i- if somebody has a real expertise in chicken keeping and is able to do it in a way that's not causing problems, I'd like to see us restrict the problems in some effective way. Um, by, if we have a use permit situation, um, minor use permit or a use permit for a greater number of hens and then there tends to, and there, there turns out to be an issue, then we can revoke the use permit. I, I wouldn't want to just completely restrict it right off the bat when there's not a problem necessarily.
All right. So the idea of this, of course, is not so much for us to debate back and forth, but certainly we should share some ideas and I think that's helpful. Uh, so you had a chance to weigh in, myself and, and Councilmember Ford have, because it was his idea. I'd like to ask, so we can wrap this up, uh, Vice Mayor Harvey and Councilmember Moore, to, which of those directions do you lean more towards or neither? Let us know. Uh, Councilmember Moore, uh, Ford's suggestion, or would you be more open to increasing numbers? I believe generally is Councilmember Sparks's suggestion. And let's see, whoever wants to go first, whatever hand I see is Count Vice Mayor Harvey.
So can, Ben, can you restate what it is that you said, or Mayor, can you restate what he said? I, I'm not sure that I understood.
Oh, it's after Ken. I'm going to put that pressure on Ben Ford. Go ahead, Ben.
Sorry, Ben.
So, so my idea is that the Market Garden idea applies if you have 20 hens or less. If we're talking over 20, then it's more like crop production requires either a minor use permit or use permit for the sale, not just for having more hens.
For, for both sale and the hens or just, so it's like a crop production, you're doing more?
Right.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I, I like, um, Councilmember Ford's i- idea that, that I think that we should, with the use permit, I think we can control, you know, all of the, the issues and we can always rev- rev- God, it's getting late. Yeah. Uh, we can always revoke the permit if we have issues that can't be resolved. Does that help, Mark?
I think so. Uh, Ben, just so I understand this, we, I had heard pretty clearly for at least most of us that there was not a lot of interest in perhaps widening beyond that 20 per parcel, regardless of size. Are you suggesting that this would be a process where if people could through a use, use permit, perhaps go beyond that 20?
Well, yes, that Councilmember Moore proposed that originally and I, I thought that was a good, you know, in the rare, and so, so what's in the code is you can have 20 and you can sell them à la Market Garden. And then some provision that, that in RR or some, some appropriate district, if you've got a large enough parcel, you could apply for a use permit. That's a pretty high bar, I think. So I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think just on that, I'm going to pull back and not to argue or, or, but just in terms of, from my perspective, direction to staff. I don't know if I'd support that because I just really, from what I've heard from my neighbors, what I've heard from most of my colleagues, my own personal experience, I can't see opening the door, even with a use permit, uh, simply because it sounds like if we allow it, we get into problems, it's really hard to resolve. Um, just from the people who've had chickens and I think Ms. Gilardi's experience, I think I'd be hesitant. So at any rate, um, you know, even if we can't come to a complete consensus, this is good. This gives staff an idea of where we're thinking and we'll see what they bring back. I think we've given them a general direction of what we like and don't like. And one more word, I see the Vice Mayor has her hand up. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just, I want to be clear that, you know, I, I believe it was said that, um, uh, Ben said that it was a high bar. It would have to be a high bar because I would have a real big problem if in an RVL area, which is a half acre, somebody applied for a use permit and asked for 200 chickens. I mean, that would be, that would be a problem. So the, the fact that there's no limit on that and they can apply for it, um, you know, it does get to be problematic. And I would not want to see that in our RVL areas. It just, it, it just wouldn't work. It, um, you know, con- conceptually, um, I agree with Councilmember Sparks that we want to encourage these things. But the reality is these are not, uh, commercial properties. They are residential properties. So I think we have to keep bringing that forward. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, I, to use a bad turn of phrase, I think we've beaten the subject of hens to death. And after that unfortunate alocore, now we'll move on to our next and I believe our final discussion.
Yes. Okay, we're in the home stretch here. So we're going to talk about Veronda Faletti Ranch now to wrap up. Um, so, uh, just briefly, a little background, uh, Veronda Faletti Ranch is a four-acre property that the city owns and historically was used as a ranch. Uh, in 2018, we entered into a contract with Farmster uh, to operate a demonstration farm on the site. And, um, there are some activities happening, uh, there currently that Farmster is organizing. Um, we have a conservation agreement with the Sonoma County Ag Preservation and Open Space District on that property and it limits the uses of the site to agricultural, historic, educational and recreational uses. Okay, next slide. So part of our, our challenge with Veronda Faletti Ranch is that even though there are uses specified by the Conservation Easement and our, our agreements with Farmster, the property is, uh, not appropriately zoned. Uh, currently it's zoned, uh, neighborhood low density. And, uh, that zoning designation does not allow, uh, a number of the different activities that have been, um, have been put forward for Veronda Faletti Ranch. And so, you know, what we're proposing, and this is actually staff's position on this, is that we change the zoning from neighborhood low to open space, uh, recreational. Uh, we run into another hurdle with that though, that there are some uses that we've talked about for Veronda, Veronda Faletti Ranch that are not allowed in OSR currently. And so a next step might be then to amend, uh, the definition of OSR to allow some of these land uses. And, uh, that would be, we're proposing potentially with a use permit. Uh, that could include crop production, uh, plant nursery, uh, animal keeping, uh, an agricultural accessory structure, uh, which is essentially a greenhouse or hoop houses, uh, childcare and daycare center, um, which is, is happening on the site through our contract with the CND loan, uh, childcare center, uh, a produce stand, farmer's market, artisan and craft product manufacturing, and that would be related to produce from the site, uh, meeting facility, space and caretaker quarters. And, um, currently we allow caretaker quarters in the OSC, Open Space Conservation Zoning District. Um, and, um, that the space on the property that is the ranch house, um, is a space that would be the caretaker quarters. That would be the only residential and that is allowed by our Conservation Easement with the Ag and Open Space District. And then finally, um, I want to just, uh, bring up, uh, the idea of ensuring equity and inclusion programming, uh, in our activities at Veronda Faletti Ranch. This was, um, uh, suggested by the Planning Commission when we went forward, when we went with them, to them in March. And the idea really there is just to ensure through our contracts as the property owner, that, um, gardening education is extended to all members of the community, um, in, including Spanish language programming, targeted community outreach, school programs and other activities. So again, that is not a code change. It would be a programmatic, uh, approach that the city would take in, in its, um, work in Veronda Faletti Ranch. Okay, Mayor, I'm going to turn it back to you.
A shame we're getting to the end. We're all getting really good at this, Autumn. Let's go right to public comment. Folks, we're on the home stretch, as Autumn said. Packet page 59, and this is potential strategies related to zoning in Veronda Faletti, and you at Veronda Faletti Ranch.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. John Delasso, please go ahead.
Very good. Thank you, uh, so much. And thank you for holding on through this late hour. And I'm hoping that, um, the council and I know staff did receive an email that I sent regarding a couple of concerns, um, on behalf of a board that I sit on, which is the Kattati Historical Society. We've had a keen interest, obviously, in, uh, the whole property, um, but specifically one of the structures on there and some potential future use. We've been in discussions with Farmster, with Dustin. Uh, he seems to be in agreement with, um, the intended use that we have. And I guess my question comes up when we're spending this evening talking about uh, food production and possibly, you know, sale of, of food production. Um, and if staff can have an opportunity to possibly answer my question. But item two E is an Edward, uh, talks about childcare and daycare. And I guess going back to when the property was, uh, purchased through Sonoma County Ag and Open Space District, um, I, I just don't remember that being part of that discussion. And I'm trying to figure out how that particular item anyway fits in to the whole Veronda Faletti Ranch. Uh, so that's the question I'll pose and whether, um, I can get an answer this evening or offline. Um, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Roy Smith, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, I would actually agree with, um, the statement about childcare. That, that's the one thing that looks a little odd there. Um, otherwise, what I would, what I would say is that this, um, the chain, the, uh, the zoning change is, um, very sensible. I, I very much agree with it. Um, that the value that I see with this, uh, this plot is that it can go from a, currently a very expensive historical time capsule to something that actually can, can serve as a, um, a hub for bringing back functional farming skills, um, like I was talking about earlier. And what I'd also like to see at the site would be a, an aggregation center. So we were talking about having the Market Gardens in the residential areas. If people could simply, you know, they could, they could carry them, like physically carry things on a bicycle or on a wheelbarrow, they could bring in their extra cabbage and put it up on, onto the, uh, like a common market area there where people could come in, say, six days a week and they could walk from those areas. I used to live within spitting distance of the property. You could walk there and get your, your vegetable needs every day. Um, so I'd like to see some kind of actual community gardens or a community, uh, market, um, stall. That would be a great thing. And then the other thing that I think that's missing here would be, uh, farm worker housing, which needs to be a model for all productive land in the county now, which is that we have the people working the land live on the land. Um, so you've got a, there's a caretaker quarters, but somebody's doing the work there. Somebody's doing the animal husbandry, the cropping or whatever it is. And if they're driving from some other location, we've defeated the entire goal, which is localization and lower, lower needs for energy, lower traffic. So we, we could solve a couple of problems in the model on this property by, by putting in farm worker housing. Um, and that could be in part of a barn or a trailer, however people want to do that. That's my, uh, input there. Thank you.
Pat Gilardi, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so you know, way back when I actually walked for the Ag and Open Space Sales Tax Extension, um, this, this is a sales tax. The community members pay for this. I cannot imagine that the community would be okay with seeing childcare, daycare on that property. I don't think that's what people anticipated. And so I absolutely disagree with childcare and daycare center there. Um, the last speaker, I also don't think that the local taxpayers uh, intended for there to be farm worker housing on that property. This is a community asset for all of us to enjoy. Maybe, maybe go to, um, an exhibit on, uh, on spinning or, um, watch somebody shear sheep or something like that. There's an educational opportunity out there. And it's a way for us to celebrate our agricultural heritage. But I think first and foremost, this is a community asset that we're all, as taxpayers, paying for. And I think that it needs to stick to farming. And, um, so I, I say no to farm worker housing. I actually don't even agree with the caretaker quarters. Um, and, uh, and absolutely no on childcare, daycare. Thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Well, we'll bring it back. Uh, we had a couple of questions that are going to hit first. Uh, first of all, good to hear your voice, John Delasso. It seems familiar to hear during a council meeting. Uh, you had a question regarding future use of the barn. I think Mr. Obitz sent out something that, but I'm going to ask him to speak to it if he could, please.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so there hasn't been any sort of determination on the future use of the barn. We did have a, um, you know, public workshop in December of last year to start thinking about what sort of ideas were out there for the barns. Um, that's really as far as it's progressed at this point. So there'll be additional public workshops to talk about ideas for that, one of which, um, I know Kattati Historical Society put forward. So there's, there's still more conversation to go on that. And I will also say one more thing on the, um, the caretaker quarters. That, that's actually explicitly part of the Open Space Conservation Easement. So it's, the Open Space District allows it explicitly. Whether or not we'd actually use it for that, I guess is a different question. And then, um, and then on the, uh, childcare, daycare center, I admittedly, I don't know what the code definition is of that, but I can tell you that the, um, the licensee and the licensee there, what they're doing is they're doing, um, uh, adolescent education, basically from preschool through high school ages. And, um, it's all farm-based education. That's the intent. So, um, if that, maybe if the definition needs to be modified to match that intent, that was really the intent with that item there. Not, not for-
And I want to see if I understand this correctly, just so, it's, it's helpful to me. And I wanna see if I understand this correctly, just so, if it's helpful to me, maybe it helps some of us in the audience and on the council. So basically the reason for this proposed, uh, strategy change for zoning to allow childcare and daycare isn't to put a dissimilar use here, but it's allowed, to allow youth programs, including education and farming, where our food comes, things like that. And also there was a mention that, that essentially the cost of us being born ultimately or originally by the taxpayers, that any licensing through that helps in a small way to mitigate that too. Would that be a correct summation of that? 'Cause I can see from an outside perspective, if you look at this just sitting there, it does jump out, but from the discussions I'd had with some of the principals behind this, once I understood it, and that's the way at least I understood it, it seemed logical, um, for that sort of purpose. You know, I, I know I've heard that a few times tonight, uh, we've lost track of where our food comes, comes, things like that and maybe there's value in having kids there on a somewhat regular basis for education and experience and just, just to see how it really works.
Yeah, yes, Mayor, I mean, it could be that when we come back, we need to amend the title of that or maybe the definitions better describe what we're talking about, which is education, educational-
I think that might be helpful, yeah. So sorry about that, council, I jumped the gun and really it's time to bring it back to the council and I'll be looking as usual to see you all speak first. And I see Councilmember Ford, your hand is up. Please go ahead.
Thanks. Real quickly, I'm in support of all three of these items. I, um, I think two E does need to be rephrased, something about farming, food systems and natural systems, educational activities or something like that, that, that captures, we're not just talking about a dissimilar use. This is the education that was, that's referenced in the, um, in the Conservation Easement. Uh, other than that, I'm in support of all of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Vice Mayor Hardy.
Uh, yes, a couple of things. I, I would like to see that, that wording changed on the childcare, daycare 'cause I think it is a little misleading and, you know, knowing that the intent is really just to have the educational opportunities for children, I, I don't understand, you know, why that's being called childcare or daycare, so, um, I'm hoping you can, uh, do something about that. Um, I am okay with the change for one. Um, two, the question I have is, um, around the rooster. Uh, it says one rooster per acre, I'm not really in support of that. I, I think that we've made some commitments to the neighbors around there that, you know, this, this, um, space will, will not be disrupting their whole lives. And as we well know, that that's why in our regular chicken ordinance, we don't really allow, um, roosters. So I think we should stick with hens, I'd like that to come out. Um, and then I think that we need a little bit more clarification on what's meant by meeting facility. Um, I think some folks have, uh, decided that meeting facility means event center. And I don't believe that that was the intent there. I think if, um, Autumn and/or, um, whoever, Damian, could, um, kind of expand on that 'cause I don't think that that, that's what, uh, the intention was. And again, we made a commitment, um, when we had the open meetings with the neighborhoods, that this would not turn into, you know, a circus with, you know, twenty buses and all of these events with, you know, thou- thousands and thousands of people, so, um, those are the things that, um, I am most concerned, um, about on this list.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's go to Councilmember Sparks next.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'm just really enthusiastic about number three, the equity and inclusion programming and one thing I'd really, I'd like to see is, um, having public school field trips to the ranch, um, so that we're reaching, um, school age kids from diverse set of backgrounds and not just people who can pay for, um, private, private programs that, or I guess, um, you know, pay per participation programs. Um, I'd really like to see public schools involved. Um, and then going to the zoning, I, maybe staff can explain this to me, um, 'cause I'm, I'm sure you have good reasons why this is the way you want to do it. It just seems sort of philosophically odd to me that we're changing what's allowed in the entire OSR zone, um, just for this one property, so it's, it's, like, I'm sure we don't wanna have, you know, animal keeping at Pocket Park or, or, uh, you know, at, at, at other OSRs zoned places throughout the city. It really feels like we're changing the whole definition of the zone just to match what we want at Veronda Faletti. So, I, I mean, is it, i- is it just really cumbersome or difficult to, or impossible to create a, like a new little zone carve-out for this one particular circumstance? It just feels odd to change the whole zone. Um, and maybe if, if someone could address that, just explain it to me.
Autumn, if you'd like to speak to that, since it's a direct question right now, that would be helpful. Please go ahead.
Director House is going to, uh, address that.
Thank you, Mayor Landman, uh, and, uh, Councilmember Sparks. Yes, so, um, you know, in thinking about, we know we need to change the zone from residential and so we were originally thinking of actually zoning it agriculture because we do have an agriculture land use in the general plan and, and the direction says to, to create a zoning district to accommodate that. However, then looking at all of the allowable activities under the Conservation Easement and some of the licensing, uh, agreements that have been approved for the current operator, it seemed, uh, uh, open space recreation, which is essentially the park zoning, uh, made much more sense for a few reasons. One, uh, it more addressed what was already approved and anticipated through that Conservation Easement and licensing agreement with Farmster. Uh, and then two, it allows greater flexibility moving forward as to the, how the property might be used and how the city may, and the community may want it to be used, uh, if we zone it as a park, right? However, the current definition of open space recreation, the park zoning district, doesn't allow some of the things that happen, uh, under the Conservation Easement and open space. So it was kind of a, I'll go ahead and say chicken or the egg, uh, this kind of conversation. And we were trying to decide, well, which, which way is it best to do? And we're, with this, we feel rewriting the open space, uh, recreation, the park zoning district to allow greater flexibility in uses at all of the city-owned parks actually is just a more broad and flexible, makes the district more broad and flexible at all those districts, which we completely control. So there's no way any of these uses are ever gonna occur at any of these properties without the city expressly allowing it to occur and likely entering into a license agreement with a third-party operator. So that's also why childcare is in there. I can understand how it's somewhat, uh, misl- see it in this context, but broadly, you can understand how allowing childcare at a park property may be beneficial, which is what we're proposing to do with this district, uh, change.
All right, thank you very much, that makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. House. Councilmember Moore.
Well, thank you. Um, I would concur pretty much with, uh, Vice Mayor Harvey. Um, we probably don't need a rooster there and, um, I do think we need to clean up that definition of two E. I think that's way too broad. Um, I have issues with one provider being on a, um, in a program like that. I think it may give, um, that provider preference over all the other providers as well, but that's another issue for now. And, um, yeah, I don't know that it really needs to be a meeting facility, maybe having, um, clarification on that as far as, uh, not an event center, but, but something along those lines. And, and that's about it on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, all right. Well, as usual, being mayor, it's somewhat anticlimactic when you get to weigh in 'cause pretty much the direction's already been cast, but nevertheless, I kinda agree with much of what I've heard. I'm fine with one, two, um, two A, two B, um, as far as two C, I would tend to agree. I know we actually have had a couple of roosters there and so far no complaints, but I have to admit, I'm really cognizant and I think those of us were there at the meeting when we started this endeavor. Councilmembers Moore, Harvey, um, city manager, uh, Obit, although I don't know if he was city manager then, but we were all there for that and we remember a neighborhood that came in that wasn't quite sure if they were happy with what was going on here. We had a good community meeting and we essentially promised, no, you're not gonna have issues, we're gonna be good neighbors in terms of noise and odor and the typical things that could be problematic with a somewhat working farm right next to them. And that promise made people happy and since then, they've really grown to love this and support it. So I think I would be comfortable losing the rooster too. Laying heads worked just as well, to the best of my knowledge at least, uh, not having a lot of background in, at animal husbandry. But I think that's the direction I'd like to go. I'm fine with two D and two E. Yeah, I think it makes sense, uh, if you wanna allow youth programs and the kids are going to be there for a portion of time, they're younger kids, you probably need some sort of childcare and daycare and it makes sense to call it out, although I think, as many have said and staff have indicated, relaying how that's described would be helpful. I have some comfort memo with contracting, we contract with outside people. For example, Mr. Di Matteo, uh, to run this operation for a period of time. We're gonna contract with somebody to provide these youth programs for a period of time. I think we're comfortable with that and these contracts or agreements will probably have some degree of limited duration and they can always change over time, but I think I'm fine with where that could potentially go. As a matter of fact, just to cut to the chase, I think the only thing I had a real question about might be the meeting facility. And Vice Mayor Harvey hit that a little bit, as I asked staff earlier, are we talking small meetings occasionally or event centers with meetings all the time? 'Cause they're different things, they make a big difference. Uh, I, I'd like to see us make sure that that stays small and unproblematic for the neighbors. I'd like to s- suggest two things. First of all, language somewhere in this that states, uh, states, restates that promise to the community to be good neighbors in terms of noise and other nuisances in the operation and establishments of this farm. And then secondly, I wanted to ask, on the question of changing the zoning to allow just these special things for Veronda Faletti, I'll admit I might have not followed track it perfectly, but I just wanna confirm, does it actually make it clear in here that these added uses are only for Veronda Faletti? 'Cause if it isn't spelled out, if it's just incidental, 'cause we would have to do it, I think that is kind of then permissive to encourage people to ask for it. I'd like to see language that indicates this is specifically for this one site, myself, that would be a recommendation. But other than that, a big thumbs up to just about everything on there and, uh, I think you've heard the input from myself and others about, as we work towards seeing what meetings and stuff work there, I think, keep them smaller. If you occasionally have a large meeting, like perhaps a fundraising dinner, let's not do it too terribly often and let's make it as easy and thoughtful as the neighbors, maybe invite all the neighbors. Uh, some things like that would go real well. Uh, and other than that, I think that is all the input I have. I'm not seeing any other hands. I'm gonna ask staff if they have enough feedback or anything that we need to touch on that we haven't covered.
Um, no, that is really helpful, um, all of that information. Thank you all for all of your input, thanks to the community members, um, I think this gives us what we need.
Perfect, and I will add to that, we had a lot of people participate tonight. Most of you, many of you have made it to this relatively late hour all evening long. I thank you for that and with that, with no objection from the council, we are adjourned at ten thirty-five. Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you next time. Good night.
Good night, all. Good night.
Night.